Day of November 7th, 2023, and regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors.
Madam President, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Vallis absent. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Four members present, one absent from partying too much for his wedding. So we'll go now to invocation from Pastor Horace Whitley from Mount Olive Baptist Church. Any more? Thank you, Otis. Horace?
Thank you.
Please write.
Those of you who will, please bow your heads with him. God in heaven, we begin by giving you thanks for your blessing of the past and your blessing for the future. Forgive us of our transgressions and guide us by your word, eternal truth, day by day. May your presence be with us as the Kings County Board of Supervisors conducts its business. We pray for our Kings County community and all of its officials who serve us. We pray for those in our community, those who have and those who have not. Enable our leaders to resolve the issues where we live, work, and play. Remind them of their responsibility to serve the common good of all. Give them the patience to listen respectfully and be guided by righteousness, wisdom, and justice when making their decisions. Empower them with your spirit to respond in unity to the needs of the community from your point of view, not only in their hearts and minds, but in their words and actions. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Please follow me. We honor our nation's flag. Ready? Salute.
Let allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation. I am a part of this law, the liberty of our lives, so.
At this time, we'll open it up to the county awards, service awards, and Carolyn Lees. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, members of the board. Fairwoman Lees, human resources director. This is the last presentation for this year. I would like to take a moment to thank Bree and Nellie for all their hard work with the service awards program this year. There has been a Kings County Service Awards Program in place since 1977 to recognize full-time employment service for county employees. Service awards are presented to employees after the equivalent of five years of continuous full-time service and in increments of five years thereafter. At the end of each fiscal year, Human Resources identifies those employees who became eligible to receive service awards during the previous fiscal year. Each eligible recipient receives a certificate indicating the number of years of service that have been completed. Each awardee 10 years and over is also permitted to select an award to which they are entitled based on years of service completed. Awards are provided in the form of either cash or a memento based on the years of qualifying service. Employees who selected a memento will be notified by Human Resources when it is ready for pickup at the HR office. Employees who selected cash will have the amount distributed to them on their November 17th paycheck. Today, employees from Human Services Agency will be recognized. Therefore, we recommend that you acknowledge employees that have completed various milestones of county service. I will read everyone's name, even if we do not expect that awardee to be here. Awardees, when your name is read, please come forward to receive your certificate and have a picture taken. We would appreciate after accepting your certificate if you would wait in the well at the front of the board chambers for a group picture with the other recipients from your department. We do have a big group this time, so when your name is called after a picture, if you can step that way, probably we're going to fill this well before we do a group picture. All right, so beginning with the first person, we have five years Marcos Alfaro Lopez.
Next five years, we have Tara Borba. Next, we have five years Christina Dunsel. Next, for five years, we have Emma Alena. Next, for five years, we have Nancy Gomez. Five years Julie John. And five years Lisa Morales. Five years Daisy Muscata. Five years Erica Camargo. Five years Jennifer Coe. And five years Beatrice Jonghun. And our last five years, we have Jean Reyes. All right, so we have a pretty large 10-year group. For 10 years, we have Catherine Doll. 10 years, we have Marcela Hojniki. 10 years, we have Barbara Maria Lemos. 10 years Stephanie Matassa. 10 years Joanna Moran. 10 years Damares Munoz. 10 years Cynthia Puga. 10 years Laura Roja. 10 years Desiree Soto. 10 years Monica Vega. And 10 years Dora Valise Garabee. All right, so for 15 years, we have Jessica Bartlett. 15 years Rosabel Serventas. 15 years Monica Connor. 15 years Martha Green. I'm sorry, I was like waiting for me to fill it. Where's Martha? All right, 15 years Oscar Lumaly. We might need to start a second row. Sorry. I'm sure there's a whole group picture, though. This is a big group. So the next one, we have 15 years Yvonne Martinez. 15 years, we have Nora Asuna. 15 years Nicole Rogers. 15 years Sandra Said. 15 years Javier Vegas.
I know it exactly. Get a little glare on the beat.
For the next four recipients, for 20 years and 25 years, I'd like to invite Wendy Osikoff up. She can help me with these. Our first one is 20 years Maria Manuela Wyatt.
So our 20 and 25-year recipients are the humble servants behind the scenes, not looking for a lot of attention here, but I'm going to read a little bit about them anyway. Manuela began her career at the Human Services Agency August 5th of 2002 as a social worker two and then later social worker three. I had the great honor of promoting her to a social service supervisor in November of 2017. She has worked in almost all of the child welfare service programs, including prevention, family maintenance, emergency response, investigations, supervising the permanency planning, and the family resource approval programs. Manuela creates a positive and collaborative work environment. Staff appreciate her lighthearted personality. Her deputy director shared that she's had the privilege of working alongside Manuela for over 15 years. That's Monica, who's also being recognized today, and describes her as an exceptional individual. Her compassion, mentoring role, and ability to stay positive in challenging situations makes her an inspiring figure. Her impact extends beyond her direct work, reaching both colleagues and the families that she supports. Manuela has a deep connection with her family. She enjoys traveling. Manuela prefers making a difference without seeking the limelight. And despite her 20 years of service in such a challenging profession, she remains humble and continues to serve the community with compassion. I want to thank Manuela for her service to the children and families of Kings County for over 20 years.
All right, so for 25 years, we have Marina Cardenas.
Marina began her career at the Human Services Agency in June of 1998 as an office assistant, one. She was promoted to an office assistant, two, and later promoted to an office assistant, three, and has been in this position for the past 23 years. Marina is a dedicated, reliable, and very humble employee. She does her job like no one else can. At times, she is reminded that she has missed her, she's about to top out on her vacation hours. We have to force her to take time off. She donates her hours many, many times, and she's a big-hearted employee. Marina's coworkers describe her as MacGyver because she's able and willing to fix anything. She has the most random things at her cubicle. If you need a hammer, a measuring tape, a tums, she's got it, and she's the person to go to. And when people think of the word team player, she's the first name that comes to mind. Whether she's the leader of a task or assisting someone, she does it with willingness to accomplish the job. And I also would like to thank Marina for her service to the residents of Kings County and acknowledge her contributions for over 25 years.
All right, so for 25 years, we have Tammy Selken.
I met with a couple of the recipients last week that were not able to be here. And Tammy shared with me that before actually coming to work for Human Services, she was a participant in the Human Services Welfare to Work Program. She recalls going to HR and filling out a whole bunch of little pink interest cards for every job she thought she might qualify for. And she tested for the office assistant, was in the top five, and lucky for Human Services, we were the first agency to call her. Because she's, we hired her on in June 1998. This was her first real full-time job. A year later, she was promoted to an office assistant, too, and she's remained in that position for the past 24 years. Tammy has always been and continues to be a wealth of knowledge and a valuable member of our med unit. Her drive and passion for putting clients' needs first comes from having been on the other side of the table. Tammy is known for exceptional customer service, being highly detailed and thorough in her work, and the go-to person for complex cases. She shared with me that she takes pride in fixing the unfixable and solving the problems that no one else can figure out how to solve. She loves her family, which includes her children, her grandchildren, and now great-grandchildren, and a little fur baby. And she enjoys helping staff throughout the agency each and every day. I know Tammy isn't much for pictures and public acknowledgement, but she was going to watch online, and I want to thank her for her service to the residents of Kings County and acknowledge her contributions for over 25 years.
All right, our final 25-year recipient is Mona Glossby.
It took a village to twist Mona's arm to come, but we got her here. Mona began her career in human services in June of 1998 as an eligibility worker. She's promoted several times over the next few years, and in 2007 became an eligibility supervisor, where she taught, grew, and supported staff for over 14 years. Recently, in March of 2022, Mona took on a new challenge, which she describes as the most difficult but rewarding yet, and was promoted to program specialist. Mona has worked in every program within eligibility services, including the training unit where she taught, coached, and mentored new workers. It was important to Mona to learn all areas of the benefits division, and she has become a subject matter expert for CalWorks, CalFresh, and Medi-Cal programs. This, too, was Mona's first real job, and like Tammy, she was a welfare-to-work recipient prior to being hired on with the county. As a result, Mona is a highly dedicated public servant who finds purpose in making a difference, mentoring staff, and ensuring our programs are customer-oriented. Mona is known for her open, honest, and sometimes blunt communications. But Mona is all heart when it comes to service. She shared that working here has always made her feel purposeful. I want to thank you, Mona, for your service to the residents of Kings County and acknowledge your contributions for over 25 years. Thank you. And just before we do the group picture, and a thank you to all of the staff being recognized. I tallied it up. It's a little over 400 years of service that we're recognizing here today. And when you think about the thousands of people that they're impacting in this community, what a great legacy you're all leaving. Great job.
I know, a little elevation.
Yeah, just a little bit more squeezed in. There's better. All right, you're good to go.
That concludes the 2023 Service Awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'll clear out the house.
Exactly. Okay, we'll go now to unscheduled appearances. Any person may direct or address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public. And we'll allow two minutes for each item. Do I have anybody written?
I have no written correspondence. The first speaker that I have is Scott Hallwell.
Good morning, Scott. Happy Veterans Day.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much. Scott Hallwell, Kings County Veteran Services. First, I want to start off and thank your board, you, your board. Thank admin for your broad support for Operation Green Light here, a second year in a row. And also thank Public Works in the work. I know that Dom Cruise did a lot of work on it, too, but Public Works went out and really did the heavy lifting on that. And we were here at 5:30 yesterday after it got dark a little bit and observed the lighting. And it looks just as good, if not better, than it did last year. So we thank you for your support in that. The other reason I'm appearing before you this morning is just to remind you of some of the Veterans Day events that are going on. Here in Kings County, American Legion Post 3 is hosting their annual Veterans Day ceremony at the Hanford Cemetery down in the area of the tank. That'll be at 10:00 a.m. The guest speaker is going to be Commander Kristen Finley, CO of VFA 122. At the same time, VFW Post 5869 is holding their annual, and I think it's their 12th or 13th, annual Veterans Day Festival at Civic Park in Hanford. That starts at 10:00 in the morning, goes till 4:00 in the afternoon. They're having injury OTC competitions. There'll be food. There'll be a band down there. I think they're also having a car show down there. So there's a lot to do down there, a lot to see, so come out and support the veterans on that day. In Lemoore, at the Seventh-day Adventist Church, the Seventh-day Adventist Veterans Salute is taking place. Kings County Marine Corps League Det 455 is providing the color guard for that. And once again, that'll be at the Seventh-day Adventist Church at 10:30 in the morning. Their address is 1035 East Hanford Armona Road. And then to wrap up the day, American Legion Post 100 is holding their annual Veterans Day parade in Lemoore at 6:00 p.m. So lots for people to do, a lot of things for, lots of ways for folks to come out and show their support for veterans. And finally, just wanted to make an announcement that there are still plenty of vouchers available to veterans, law enforcement, first responders, and their families for the boxing event that's taking place on November 18th at Chuck Chansey Park.
Very good. That's all November 10th, this Friday, so busy day.
Well, actually, that's going to be on Saturday. We have the day off Friday, but we're actually working on Saturday.
It's all Saturday.
Those will be all on Saturday, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd have been there on Friday morning. Time to get a day off. Kate, do I have anybody online with their hand raised?
It doesn't appear that anyone online has their hand raised, and that's.
Anybody in our audience like to say anything? I'd like to make a comment about an event tonight or tomorrow night. I bet we're working. So tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, the Tenable Groundwater Management Act, the State Water Board will have a public hearing or public forum. And anyone in the public that is affected by the sigma coming up, that come there and listen to them and have comments they'd like. Comments will be at 7 o'clock. It's important that the community shows up. This is at the Hanford Civic Auditorium, and we need to be heard. And so far, we're not as vocal as we need to be on how this groundwater, Tenable Groundwater Management Act will affect us. So anybody out there that has tomorrow night available, please come and speak your mind. Well, thank you. Okay, we'll go on now to approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session sent from regular meeting October 31st, 2023.
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting October 31st, 2023.
It's low per approval.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam President, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. It has approved. We'll move on now to consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter can be acted by one motion or polled if need be.
No questions, comments, but Chair Nev's moves to adopt.
Move by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam President, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, four in favor, one absent. The consent counter has been passed. Move on now to regular agenda items, and the first item on the agenda is from the District Attorney's Office, Sarah Hacker. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, everybody. It's such a pleasure to be here today, and it was an honor to see so many people who have been working diligently and dedicated to this county. So I just wanted to take my hats off to the folks that were honored here today. We have two matters on the agenda this morning. One is the National Victims Rights Week Community Awareness Project. We're asking for permission to apply for a grant. I wanted to also introduce Shannon Meyer, who is our new victim witness program coordinator. And she has done a fabulous job of putting together these agenda items, and I wanted to thank her and to give you guys the opportunity to meet her, as well as to thank her as well for all of the work she did in putting these agenda items together.
Well, thank you.
So National Victims Rights Week takes place April 21st through 27th of next year. It is a great opportunity for victims to come together and meet with the attorneys, as well as the victim witness staff and advocates. And it promotes healing, and it also brings in the community to show what we can do to help victims, as well as inform them of the criminal justice process. Each year, the Kings County District Attorney's Office holds a victim's memorial quilt ceremony to honor victims of crimes related to death during Victims Rights Week. And again, I would love to see each and every one of you there so that you can also take part of the process. Since COVID, the ceremony has not been well-attended, and this grant could bring us funds so that we can reach out to the community, create awareness, and bring more of the community involved in this event. This year, our office would like to extend the event to hold a candlelight vigil. And this grant would assist us in providing funding for the ceremony, such as buying candles, as well as publications and advertisements to provide awareness for the event. This theme is a call to action for us to create safe environments for prime victims and to share what happened to them. By doing so, we are able to offer our support, options for life-saving services, and most importantly, hope. I can say that in the last event that we had taken place, we had an opportunity for everybody to stand up. Victims first, then their family and everybody else, and it was a powerful moment because victims stood up and they realized that they might have felt alone at first, but like the process of the criminal justice system, they find many friends and many support. the process of the criminal justice system, they find many friends and many supporters that will help them through this. And it was a powerful moment to see everybody standing up together, holding hands, hugging, and bringing everyone together. Over the past 15 years, the National Crime Victims Rights Week Community Awareness Project Program has supported more than 1,000 community projects to raise general public awareness about victims' rights and services. With many of these communities, traditional National Crime Victims Rights Week events are enhanced by the collaborative partnerships that were formed during the planning phase of each project. Examples of allowable costs include the production and purchase of advertising and print media, radio, television, or outdoor advertising to promote National Crime Victims Rights Week, and Victims Rights and available services, design and printing of promotional materials, support for event speakers, design and printing of posters, invitations and flyers, and the purchase of supplies and materials used in the public awareness events, as well as decorations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any question or comments?
So movement, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundis, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent, has been approved, and I'll try to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. We would love to have you.
And again, it's April 27th through May 3rd. And what night is your presentation?
It's April 21st through the 27th.
21st through 27th, okay, got it.
Yes, and we'll, we'll build a, a schedule of events and make sure that we share it out with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And the next agenda item that's up for today is we're asking to apply for the Elder Abuse Program Grant through our Victim Witness Program. 10.9% of Kings County population is over the age of 65, and the fiscal year October 2020 through September 2021, advocates assisted 108, I'm sorry, 168 victims over the age of 65, and those specifically for elder abuse victims. Fiscal year October 2021 through September 2022, advocates assisted 164 victims over the age of 65, 44 of those specifically victims of elder abuse. And then last year, advocates assisted 135 victims over the age of 35, and 26 of those were specifically victims of elder abuse. And it's important to have special funding for these victims because oftentimes, the older population are unaccustomed to cell phone, internet, and digital information, which is typically the manner in which we communicate nowadays, and they're just not used to that. And so it's good to have a dedicated advocate that's there that can, can communicate on their level so that they understand the criminal process. Additionally, the courthouse is not designed for those with physical and mental disabilities. Oftentimes, these victims have to go through security, they have to go through, up the stairs or in the elevators, and they have to sit sometimes hours in hardwood seats. And so the courthouse itself is not really designed to meet the needs of these individuals. And while we can't affect the way that the courthouse is structured, we can assist victims of, elder victims, in making the process as comfortable as possible for them. Elder abuse victims are also particularly vulnerable because most of the suspects and defendants in elder abuse cases are family members and caretakers. These are people that these folks trust and that they've invited in their home and their life, and that they rely on them to get the things that they need done. And so it takes a special advocate to take the time, sit down with these folks, show them the process, help them through the process, as well as rebuild and offer services to them. And so we wanna, we would like to apply for this grant so that we can meet the needs of these folks, so that we can assist them through the process. And I would also add that, you know, elder abuse has struck recently in Kings County. The most recent and heartbreaking example of elder abuse in this county was the Dollar Store murder, where an 80-something-year-old man was just minding his own business, shopping for birthday cards, and somebody came up behind him and murdered him viciously and without cause. And so I would ask that you consider allowing us to apply this, apply for this application.
Would you like us to vote on this separately for item A, B, C, D? Or do one, all at one time?
It can be voted on all at one time.
Good. Any question or comments? One's our oldest first. I don't want to be accused of elder abuse, so whatever. Motion by Supervisor Fagundis?
Second.
Second by the second oldest, Supervisor Nevs, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. This is a very serious item. We all will experience it in our lifetime at some point in some version, so I think it's good to bring awareness to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Oh, that's it? Oh, that, that explains it all. Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is gonna be Fire Department, Bill Lynch, Chief Lynch.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department, here today with an item that's actually gonna bring the Fire Department into the 20th century. I won't say the 21st, but the 20th century. Our current permit program is done on a yellow legal pad, so we're, we're stepping the game up here a little bit, looking for some software, purchasing software to actually do our permitting, records keeping, and data storage. We're working with Buffkin Software Programming, which is the same company that does community developments, particularly the building departments, software programming. They use the same, the same module, the same permit module. The good benefit of that is we'll be able to talk back and forth across each other because my prevention division works very close with the construction and inspection division and community development. So we went out, looked at some, some other programs, and believe it or not, Buffkin out of Fresno is actually the cheapest one we could, we could find. So we were very happy with that. This, this proposal has been reviewed by county councils, been reviewed by purchasing and by the risk department. So I'm here this morning to ask you to authorize the chairman to sign the contractual agreement with Buffkin Computer Consulting for this program, and then authorize the clerk of the board to sign the budget appropriations and transfer form, and I would be happy to answer any question.
Very good. Any question or comments?
Question or comment, no approval.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. You are now in the 20th.
We're in the 20th.
We'll move on now to item C, it's the Human Resources, Carolyn, not Carolyn, good morning.
Not Carolyn, sorry. Good morning, members of the board, Danielle Leep, Personnel Analyst, Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend the approval of the revised Chapter 6 of the Personnel Rules for Education Reimbursement Program. This policy was established in 1988 and was updated in 2008 and 2015. The updates that we're presenting today are, one, to increase the reimbursement amounts for employees attending an accredited bachelor's degree program or higher education from 1,000 to 1,500, to include the reimbursement of the cost to take the California bar examination if the employee passes, to modify the eligibility to include individuals on their initial probationary period, and other cleanup language was added to make this process clearer. The education reimbursement programs are important and beneficial to employees. The benefits of earning a bachelor's degree equals higher pay, access to more job opportunities, increased job satisfaction, and a career flexibility. However, for many potential students, the prospect of paying for school can feel overwhelming, making a degree feel out of reach. Education reimbursement programs help employees to achieve their educational goals. According to Northeastern University, and a center study found that investing in employees pays off big. For every $1 a company spends on education reimbursement or educational assistant programs, they save an average of $1.29 in recruiting costs. Funding for the education reimbursement program is approved each fiscal year by the board as part of the budget process. The amount made available is allocated in the Human Resources Department budget. The Human Resources Department budget did not include monies to fund the program this fiscal year. Allocated funding for this program, however, was included in the county's budget using the county's American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA allocation. $50,000 will be allocated this year and the following two fiscal years totaling $150,000 using the county's American Rescue Act allocation. Human Resources staff is currently working on the request form, so employees will be able to submit that education reimbursement request starting Monday, November the 13th. If you have any questions, I'd be really happy to try to answer them for you.
Good morning. Any question or comments? Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would just like to make a comment. This program went away about three years ago, and this is the first year we're bringing it back, so we're really excited for the employees.
Very good. Yeah, thank you for our employees. Any kind of reimbursement is great, especially to improve their, their style of life. Uh, move on now to item D, Human Services Agency, and I believe that, Monica, good morning, Monica.
Good morning, members of the board. Monica Connor, Deputy Director for the Human Services Agency. I have with me today Jean Reyes. He will be presenting our item.
Thank you. Morning, John.
Good morning, members of the board. As she mentioned, my name is Jean Reyes. I'm a program manager for Kings County Human Services Agency for the Adoption Services Program. And I'm here today recommending for the board to adopt a resolution proclaiming November 2023 as National Adoption Month here in Kings County. The history of National Adoption Month originates in 1976, when the governor of Massachusetts announced the first ever adoption week. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the first National Adoption Week. In 95, it was expanded to the entire month of November. Every year since then, more than 120,000 children are in foster care with permanent plans of adoption. During National Adoption Month, courts and communities in all 50 states collaborate to finalize thousands of adoptions of children and honor the adopting families. National Adoption Month promotes awareness of the need for adopted families for children in the foster care system. Currently, there are approximately 65 children and youth in foster care here in Kings County that currently have a permanent plan of adoption. Adopting a resolution proclaiming November 2023 as National Adoption Month in Kings County will provide an opportunity for the board to honor local service providers, as well as bring awareness to the enduring and valuable contribution of adopting parents, as well as the practitioners who are involved in adopting, in adoption activities throughout the year. Last year, Kings County hosted our first National Adoption Day Celebration, coordinating with the Kings County Superior Court, to finalize 22 adoptions on that day. This November, in collaboration with the Honorable Judge Jennifer Giuliani, we plan to host our second annual National Adoption Day Celebration by finalizing 18 adoptions and hosting a celebration to recognize those adopting families and others who have been part of the collaborative effort. Members of the board, that concludes my presentation, and I respectfully ask for the board to adopt a resolution proclaiming November 2023 as National Adoption Month here in Kings County.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments for John? Move. Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. So what, what day is that in November?
So it'll be November 17th.
November 17th. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on now to the next item, item E, Public Health Department, and it looks like we have a...
Good morning, Supervisors. Everardo Legaspi, not Rose or Heather.
I got that cleared up right. Thanks for coming.
Uh, good morning. Everardo Legaspi, Assistant Director for the Public Health Department. Uh, this morning I have Nicolas Montoya. He's a program manager with our department, and he will be presenting this item.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, good morning. Good morning, Chairman. Nicolas Montoya, Public Health. I'm here today to present an item requesting your board's approval for a service agreement with Dalville Laboratories for Water Analysis Services. In February of this year, Kings County experienced severe winter storms, which led to increased levels of floodwaters and the reemergence of Tarry Lake. On May 31st, 2023, the county health officer declared a local health emergency related to the presence of potential floodwater contamination and vector borne illnesses. This allowed the county to provide services to reduce the risk of mosquito borne illnesses in the areas impacted with floodwaters. At the time, the health department also sent out a request for proposals for laboratories in the areas to become a service provider for expanded floodwater testing in case of any issues in the floodwater areas or any risk to wildlife or human life. Today, we have not had to perform any more specialized water testing. The request for proposals was sent to nine vendors with experience in this type of service, and two bids were received. The initial selection was notified and sent to an intent toward pending contract negotiations. During these negotiations, a vendor disclosed they had not declared the full dollar amount and would likely exceed the dollar amount initially proposed. As a result, Kings County Purchasing Manager issued a decision of award. The second vendor, Dalville, who was within budget parameters, was ultimately selected. Currently, there has not been a need for this testing. However, a service agreement with Dalville would provide accurate and standard methodical water samples as needed and based on evolving needs of the county and the floodwater. The dollar amount will not exceed $268,609.7, and the item has been reviewed by council. We are requesting approval for this service agreement. Kings County Fire and the Office of Emergency Services are available for any additional questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments? I know on, on this tier, so they, they're contracted with us, so what their findings are, come to us first before it goes to the media?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then they just do, just floodwaters or anywhere near waterways?
We wrote the agreement in a way to allow for us to decide what locations are for the county.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other question or comment?
I have a quick question. So the initial, it was like 71,000. I don't know what that monthly breaks down to, because I don't know the period, but did it change very much now with this agreement? So, so what, what's the original period for the $71,000?
So there was an initial amount for a one year, and then during contract negotiations, we put in a little bit of a buffer in case additional services were needed. And so there's a cushion in there. If, for example, during negotiations dissolved oxygen, I think, was one of the tests that we want to add in. And so there's a buffer in there. We also, during contract negotiations, put in verbiage to allow for like an à la carte kind of deal. And so what we initially test, for example, recreational water, once we do that one time, we don't need to do that again. And so costs will be under what is in the budget. So there should be cost associations, or cost savings, rather.
Very good. I have a motion. Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
And this is also through the Health Department and Fire Department with Operation Burnt and Services, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. That's four in favor, one absent. So we'll move on now to item F, Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. Natalie Brinson, Parks and Ground Superintendent. I am before you all today to present a passion project that is very near and dear to my own heart. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to serve in my role here, and I believe that one of my gifts and joys in doing so is connecting people to nature. Studies have shown that not only is nature good for us, but it helps us rest and heal. For that reason, I wanted to create a special place for my fellow Kings County coworkers to recharge from their everyday stressors in the workplace and at home. A few months ago, I reached out to Dr. Lewis at Behavioral Health to propose a project that would benefit the mental health of county employees and received her full support. Since then, your county Parks and Ground staff have been hard at work installing a new garden here on our government campus, which was designed and installed in-house by the division. Nearly all materials were already on hand, making this installation low cost. This garden is located near the old courts building, directly outside the doors of the Lisa Project. The new garden, which I've named the Serenity Garden, is semi-private and features a water fountain sitting area and is comprised of all native California flowers. The plants that were installed are currently young, but over the next couple of years will transform this space into a beautiful flower garden rich in color. The space will be an ideal area to enjoy with a small group for lunch or in solitude on a break from the office. I would like to recommend your board dedicate this Serenity Garden to all Kings County employees as a space for mental health awareness, reflection, and respite from daily personal or occupational stressors.
Any question or comments?
So movement, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second. Second by Supervisor Fagundis. You know, I, I always, I moved out of my house when I was 19, and, and first thing I did was work in my yard. Didn't have any money. My grandmother lived in Woodlake, and she was in a garden club over there. So I would go to her house and take clippings from all her plants and come back and plant them. I still have all those plants today in my yard. And, you know, you have days that you're frustrated or things aren't going well. It brings calm to your mind. Go out there and just kind of hang out in the yard, maybe pull some weed, trim some bushes, or just hang out or sit. So I think it's very important for your mental state of mind, you know, with all the social media and bombardment from people coming at you all the time. It's nice to take a step away and just kind of calm down and relax, especially if you get off work. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Can you have another, another item?
Correct. And I'll introduce Ron DeMann, the School Analyst for Public Works.
Good morning. I'm presenting this as a way to save money for the general fund. We initially had a loan that we were going to bring before your board, and there were a few matters in the loan that county council was concerned about, so I found a different way to fund the equipment for the Parks Department. The Parks Department equipment is extremely old. Most of it doesn't meet Airboard standards, so this year, we really put in the kit to try and get some equipment. So this year, we really put in the kick to try and get some equipment. This is one way of doing it. The fleet fund is healthy. This is the way that we can fund this stuff to help the general fund. We'll save approximately about $8 million. Excuse me. Yeah, $8 million, no.
Consider all about if I, it was at least $20,000.
So we're going to pay the fund rate that we would be like for loaning ourselves. So fleet will get the actual money that if they had it in the treasury making money. So it would be a win-win for general fund and for fleet. So I ask that you guys approve the loan between the fleet department and the general fund.
Thank you. And the Airborne didn't have a program that fit our needs to...
They did not. And next year, there'll be more programs coming out. They're pushing heavy equipment. Right now, they don't have this type of equipment.
Okay. Yeah, I know with the oncoming slot of no water, that rush shipping is going to be major for our community. So hopefully, they're working on that. Yeah, I know they're talking about it, but might be a little bit behind. So any more questions? Move. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes. Second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, and if you have any question, contact our Airborne rep, Rusty Robinson.
I actually have, I've been dealing with the Airborne for like 12 years. I get, any chance I can take them, any, I do.
Now, it's a good access to have. Okay. Is there another item? Yeah, you do. Mitchell Warren. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer for the Public Works Department, here before your board this morning to request approval of a construction agreement for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 10, Systemic Flashing Beacon Project. A couple of years ago, the county submitted a couple of applications to hopefully get projects awarded for safety measures to implement on the county roadway network. The county had prepared a safety study, and we were able to use this study to successfully submit a couple of applications. And the one before your board this morning is the construction for the Systemic Flashing Beacon Project, which would include adding flashing beacons on stop signs and advanced warning signs, as well as updating some of the striping and pavement markings at around eight or nine locations, intersections within the county. On June 27...
Nine sixteen.
This year, your board approved...
He wants another one, like one inch, one inch, one and...
Okay, so he wants the bigger... Okay.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Going back to it, on June 27 of this year, your board approved the advertisement of this project. On July 26, we opened the bids. We've had three that were submitted. The lowest bid was submitted by Harris Development Corp. They're doing business as HBC Enterprises at around $140,000 for implementing the whole project. The project is 100% funded through the HCP program and funding, so it will all be reimbursable through the federal funds. If approved, work is expected to start mid-November, mid to end of November, and hopefully be completed by mid to late January. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but we'd like to get this project awarded so we can get those beacons on some of these things.
Thank you. Like eight intersections, you think?
Yeah.
I think it makes a big difference.
Eight intersections.
Especially when people are watching their phone, not watching the road.
So it'll be beacons on the stop signs and the advanced ones.
Oh, good. Thank you. You might need a stop, you might need an app that kind of shocks your seat suit and look up. Any... Moved by Supervisor Fagundes. Second by Supervisor Nevs. Any question or comments? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you.
These are going to be solar or...
Yes, they're solar with a battery backup.
They're all solar. Very good. Thank you.
Another one on Plant and 13th, it was like a light out, but it doesn't matter. You still see it pretty good, but I don't know how long the lights last, what LEDs. Yeah, yeah, this is like a little one on the side. I think it went out a year or so ago, but you can still see it pretty well. Okay. I don't know if we got, people wanted to ask questions or to keep bumping their view button. Okay, we'll go on now to Administration. And it looks like we have Megan Vega. Good morning, Megan. Got your name right.
Good morning, members of the board. Megan Vega is Deputy County Administrative Officer. This morning, I'm requesting the board approve these two contracts for indigent defense. California law requires counties to provide legal counsel to those individuals through the court as being unable to provide their own. In lieu of a public defender's office, Kings County contracts with local attorneys to fulfill this requirement. In October, the contracted attorney for felony and contract administration, Mary Ann Gilbert, was appointed a judgeship by Governor Newsom. In order to support the transition and maintain adequate services, Shani Jenkins, originally contracted for felony defense, has agreed to replace Judge Gilbert's role as felony and contract administrator for indigent defense. And the contracted attorney for conflict defender, Jermill Nishwath, has agreed to replace Shani Jenkins' felony contract. This will leave a vacancy in the conflict defender role. These two contracts are for the remaining eight months of the fiscal year and are retroactive to October 16 due to the quick transition of Judge Gilbert to her new role. All agreements have been reviewed and approved by county council. And if you have any questions, we have these with us.
Thank you, Megan. Any question or comment? Moved by Supervisor Robinson. Second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Okay, next we have a... Public hearing at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, one more.
One more?
Appointment.
Supervisor, I will take that item. From CSAC.
So next, we have item two in our Administration, and it looks like Cury Martinez will take this one up.
The California State Association of Counties, CSAC, provides advocacy, educational, and financial services to all California's 58 counties. Under provisions of CSAC Constitution, members of the Board of Directors and Alternatives are elected by their respective Board of Supervisors for one-year terms of office commencing with the first day of CSAC Annual Conference, which is to begin on November 13, 2023. Any Board of Supervisor is eligible for the position. And pursuant to Board policy, the Administrative Office makes no recommendation on commission and advisory board appointments. So at this time, we request your board to appoint a primary director for the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for Kings County and appoint an alternative director to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for Kings County. Thank you.
Well, I'm your current director.
Correct.
Right now. My plate is full. I think I haven't talked to Rusty about this, but would you be interested in coming from the vice chair to the chair? I'll be the vice chair. Thank you. Okay. Put in a motion.
So you want to reverse those?
Reverse it, yeah.
So move to appoint Robinson as the primary director and Verboen as the alternate?
Side of... Moved by Supervisor Nevs. Second by Supervisor Fagundes. Thank you. Appreciate that. And Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yeah.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
My question, Cury, is the meeting coming up next Thursday. Will he be the chair at that one?
Yes, that is why we needed to take action today.
That's good, because I have conflict, and I need to be somewhere the next morning somewhere else, and I need to get home. So I will look that up. Thank you. Four in favor, one absent. And we'll move on now to a public hearing that starts about three minutes. So do you guys want to do board member comments now, or can we do it in three minutes? Wait one. Box. We'll do board member comments now. We'll start with Supervisor Robinson.
Okay, let's see. Throughout the week, I met with David Merritt. David Merritt is the General Manager of the Kings River Conservation District. And by the way, he complimented Abraham Valencia for his work with OES and particularly the flooding. So kudos to you. Also, we discussed the hopeful possibility of increasing the capacity at Pine Flat Dam. If they allowed to bump it another 10 or 12 feet, that would allow at least over 100,000 acre feet, which is well needed. So it's not a done deal, but we're working towards that. Knocked on doors in Armona, just to get a feel for the needs and wants in Armona. One item is the park, to restore the park a little bit. They don't currently have one, so there have been some alternatives. Met with the refuge house owner, and he has kind of taken that as a sidestep to help the kids in Armona. But he too welcomed refurbishment of the park.
Yep, thank you very much. Supervisor Fagundes. I'm good. Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Continue to watch the Tulare Lake water recede. West Hills College Golden Eagles played the COS Giants on the volleyball court. Thursday, the work with staff on the county platform coming up on West Hills College men's game against Kwesta Cougars tipped off the 2023-24 season. It was an overtime contest, and over 195 points scored in that game. And to start out the season with a game like that was just tiring. And but we got it done. American Legion Post 100 continues to have breakfast. San Joaquin Valley Regional Planning Agency Policy Council Meeting was held on Friday. There were only two informational items. The first was from the California Department Treasurer, talking about updates on tax revenues and different programs. The second was the program from the California Energy Independence and how fuels like oil and gas remain important as adequate power replacement sources of being developed. The group supports all forms of energy reliability and affordable for all Californians. Lamoore High played football playoff game, and they'll have another one on Thursday due to the Veterans Day holiday. The Lamoore Rotary Crab Feed was very well attended. A lot of people there as well on Saturday. West Hills College Lamoore Paramedic Advisory Committee Meeting met yesterday. The annual report for the 2020 and 2021 classes, with 92% of the students went ahead and got their certification after graduation of the 2021 and the 2020 class with about 84. And it was kind of impacted with COVID, so that's still not a bad graduation route to become certified. Many of these students go on and don't become practicing paramedics, but they go into nursing programs and other occupations. And so anytime you can get a student to be successful is the goal of the operation. The college has applied for an apprenticeship program through the state of California. Currently, students and employers are paying for the cost of the education. And through the apprenticeship program, gives them the opportunity to get that through grant funding. So we look forward to having that take place, that paperwork's due this calendar year, and hopefully earlier in the spring of '24, find out if it's funded, and then hopefully the next class will take advantage of that. Accreditation was put off because of COVID, but accreditation will take some, take place sometimes between July and December of 2024. So we look forward to going through that process. And then if you're available on December 1st at 9:00 a.m., the groundbreaking at the new Health Career Building on the West Hills College campus will take place. It's about an 18-month construction and hopefully be able to see students by '26. And then the Mattie Institute yesterday held a discussion on regional development, closing the gap between the valley and the coast. And it's the same discussion we've been having for 30 years. So thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the Seminole Valley or the Cross Valley Rail Corridor. We had an issue come up between Lurie County and Kings County. We got that resolved, trying to work together. A lot of discussion on the future Heike Rail Station. And Lurie County was over here kind of taking some of our bribes away. So we got that straightened out, and we'll probably have another meeting in three months and kind of form a committee to keep an eye on that. I talked about the fact that when Heike Rail came into our community, you know, we supported the rail alignment along Highway 99. And before we knew it, they had had secret meetings that runs through Kings County. So I don't want to see that happen again when it comes to the Heike Rail Station. The alignment is through Kings County, should be under Kings County jurisdiction, under Kings County authority, and Lurie County was trying to take it over. So we had a pretty frank discussion with Angie from CART. She doesn't miss words, and it was a very... It was a good meeting, so it worked out well. And again, I like to remind people again, San Diego Ground Water Management Act tomorrow night, Hanford Civic Auditorium, 6 o'clock, they are having a workshop. So I would recommend all people involved would be there and make your comments. And if you don't have time to be there, support by a written comment by December 11. So thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and go to a public hearing, and it's the Community Development Agency. And it looks like we have Noel. Good morning, Noel.
Good morning, Supervisors. Noel Tomlinson, Planner with Community Development Agency, here to present the annual implementation of Government Code Section 51244B regarding the modification of the California Land Conservation Williamson Act Program. In 1969, Kings County implemented the California Land Conservation Act Program, also known as the Williamson Act. This act provided property tax relief to agricultural landowners who voluntarily agreed to devote their land to long-term commercial agricultural use through a Williamson Act 10-year contract or farmland security zone 20-year contract. After 2009, 2010 state budget cuts all but eliminated subvention funding, Senate Bill 863 offered $10 million in subvention funds to be allocated to counties implementing a program that recaptured a portion of forgone tax revenue by decreasing Williamson Act and farmland security zone contract terms by 10%. Doing this would allow landowners to retain 90% of their reduced tax benefits. In early 2011, SB 80 repealed SB 863, and the $10 million allocation to counties was removed. AB 1265 was enacted in July 2011 to reestablish the reduced-year term contracts, and the legislature amended Section 51244 to remove the previous expiration date and to allow jurisdictions to annually implement the reduced contract terms as necessary. In the past, the board has voted to implement the contract reductions from 2011 through 2022, effective for calendar years 2012 through 2023. If the board chooses to implement Section 51244B again, the county can recapture a portion of forgone property tax revenue by decreasing land conservation contracts by 10%, but still allowing landowners to retain 90% of their reduced tax benefits. In addition to staff time, the cost of implementation would include an estimated $2,000 for the two notices sent to approximately 2,000 Kings County landowners who are under contract. The implementation of Section 51244B is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15317, Class 17, and none of the special circumstances in Section 15300.2 apply. Staff recommendations are: Conduct a public hearing to implement modifications to the California Land Conservation Williamson Act Program; Adopt a resolution authorizing the implementation of Government Code Section 51244B to reduce contracts by 10%; Find that the implementation is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions.
Do we ask questions now, or are we open up public hearing? Look. Okay, so this is nothing new. This is procedural. We've done it every year.
Every year.
They started it. So.
Since two thousand eleven.
Any questions? Yeah.
Supervisor from Robinson.
Uh, can you explain the farmland security zone portion?
So the farmland security zone, um, is a similar contract to, and it's under the Williamson Act Program. Um, but it's a twenty-year contract as opposed to a ten-year contract. So it's a little bit longer and more restrictive.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. And Madam Kurt, do we have any written comments?
I have not received any written correspondence and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments on the item being opened, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it up for an action.
So move it, Chair.
Goodbye, Supervisor Nev. Second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Kurt, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you, Noel. Appreciate it. Move on now to board correspondence.
So your board.
I'm sorry, upcoming event.
Uh, no, it's actually board correspondence first.
All right.
So your board received a few notices actually from the Department of Finance, there's approximately five. One is the monthly Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report, the monthly fund balance report for Kings County, the Treasury Report of Cash Investments and the Investment Pool Portfolio Management Portfolio Summary for July and August. Additionally, the board received correspondence from Bixler, Motterson, Evans and Fox Bus LLP dated November third regarding the Tulare Lake Resource Conservation District appointment to fill vacancy. Lastly, the board received correspondence from the California State Comptroller's Office dated October twenty-fifth regarding an award to Kings County for the financial transaction reporting per fiscal year ending in June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. For upcoming events, we have a few. Today, the South Valley Battle of the Badges Drive starts. Um, and it will run till Thursday from nine AM to two PM in the Old Sheriff's Parking Lot outside of our government center. Those who participated in last blood drive on September seventh are eligible to participate in the upcoming Battle for Badges. This event is open to the public and employees, um, are able to go on release time to participate. The tenth annual Lamoore Veterans Day Parade is happening this Saturday, November eleventh. Um, six PM downtown Lamoore and the eleventh annual Veterans Day Festival will be this Saturday from November eleventh at the Hanford Civic Park from ten to four. The Avonel Rotary Club with the Central California Food Bank will be distributing food November fourteenth from ten to twelve at the Avonel Community Center Parking Lot. And the Kings County Human Services Agency is organizing an annual Foster Christmas Children Toy Drive. Uh, many children do not receive Christmas gifts, so if you would like to participate and donate an unwrapped gift this year, please contact HSA. We just sent a press release out and it's available on our website and on our social media platforms. We just need to receive the gifts by November fifteenth. Uh, Friday, December first from nine to ten AM. Supervisor Nev mentioned that the West Hills College Lamoore is having the, uh, breaking ground on the new Visual Arts and Applied Sciences Building. And lastly, the Kings County Child Support Services is organizing their Slipper Sock Drive and is collecting slipper socks to donate to senior citizens in Kings County. They do this annually and donations can be dropped off at the office at Child Support Services, JTO or KCao. Additionally, we will have a box here in administration. So if any department wants to drop off the socks, we will take them gladly. For upcoming agenda items, the following items are for November third to twenty-first, as November fourteenth meeting is canceled. The Child Support Services has an item regarding a plan of cooperation with Venice Medical Center for Hanford. County Council has two items, the Conflict of Interest and Appointment of Trustees to Tulare Lake Reclamation District. DA has an item regarding a advanced step higher for a district attorney investigator. Health has an item regarding child health and disability prevention program. Probation has an item of a purchase of furniture for the juvenile branch facility. And lastly, Public Works has an item regarding the Kings County Bridge Prevented Maintenance Program Phase Two. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, move on now to, uh, closed session. Will we have conference with real property negotiator? Uh, you gonna read all this this time, Diane?
You can direct the, can direct everybody's attention to that portion of the agenda and that's satisfactory.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll close this meeting out with a closed session. And, uh, adjourned, the next meeting will be, uh,
November twenty-first.
Thank you very much. Are we online? We got Caitlin online?
She is.
Okay. Time now is eleven oh seven. This is Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. This is the regular meeting of the California Public Finance Authority. Madam Kurt, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley is absent. Doug Birboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson is absent. Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Three and, uh, three are present. One is on its way. Uh, we can conduct business. First item today is approval of minutes, approval of minutes from October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, record meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Fagun, the second by Nevs. Madam Kurt.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the minutes from two thousand twenty-three, October twenty-fourth. Uh, consent counter, all items listed on consent counter are listed by one motion and we only have one item. And that moved by supervisor Nevs.
Second.
Second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam Kurt, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay. Uh, all items have passed, three in favor, two absent. New business, uh, consider approving resolution twenty-three dash zero five A for TPI Holloway Metals Recovery LLC. County of Kern, up to one hundred and fifty million dollars in revenue bonds. And we'll turn it over to Caitlin. Good morning, Caitlin.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, today we are considering the approval of up to a hundred and fifty million in revenue bonds. This, as you mentioned, is for TPI Holloway Metals Recovery, which is a Delaware limited liability company. Uh, the proceeds of the two thousand twenty-three bonds will be loaned to the borrower primarily to finance a project, uh, consisting of the acquisition, design, construction and equipping of an automotive shredder residue processing and recycling facility in Lost Hills, California, uh, which is located in Kern County. Uh, the borrower will lease the project site where the facility will be located from Lost Hills Environmental LLC under a long-term lease agreement. Uh, the facility will receive the ASR, which is the automotive shredder residue from, uh, Lost Hills Environmental, which has two cells of monofil landfill primarily containing ASR, um, located next to the facility that will be constructed. Um, additionally, a subsidiary, a subsidiary area of, um, HMR will supply ASR to the facility from regional shredding facilities as well. Um, the project received an allocation of a hundred and fifty million from the California Debt Limit Allocation on March fifteenth. Um, and they are also building a facility like this in Tennessee, so they have some experience in building this facility. Um, the borrower, as I mentioned, is seeking up to a hundred and fifty million. These will be, uh, designated as green bonds. Um, the proceeds will be loaned by the issuer to the borrower and will be used to finance a subs- a substantial part of the cost of the acquisition, design, construction and equipping of the project, fund thirty months of interest, fund a debt service reserve and also fund a portion of the cost of issuance. Um, TEFFAR was held on behalf of Kings County on October twenty-fourth and approved. And the TEFFAR hearing is being, um, held in Kern County today. Um, the bonds will be issued as secured fixed rate bonds. Um, they will be sold to institutional investors in minimum denominations of a hundred thousand dollars and will be sold in compliance with the authority's issuance policies. Um, the project has a number of public benefits. Um, it will provide approximately thirty jobs during construction and about fifty permanent jobs once the facility is up and running. Um, there's also a number of environmental benefits to the projects, um, due to their technology they will be using. Um, which not only contributes to the circular economy by preserving resources, but also reduces waste and harmful pollutants in landfills. Um, so happy to take questions on the Lost Hills Recycling Project if there are any.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any question or comment? Uh, do we have anybody online that would like to make a comment? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So move it, Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs. Second by supervisor Fagun, Madam Kurt, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Birboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, Caitlin, we have four in favor, one absent. Uh, thank you for your time coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any, any public comment at this time?
Have you written or anyone online?
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.